And also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Troop 173 and 6173, and followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, business, consideration of previous meeting minutes.
Mayor, as my final on the City Commission, I'd like to do the motion for the minutes. The minutes, move to approve the minutes for November 26, 2019, Roderick Meeting.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. At this time, we want to recognize the Leavenworth legend. So I'll be doing a presentation to an outgoing Commissioner, Larry Dediki.
Glad that you came around my way, thank you.
On behalf of the City of Leavenworth, we would like to present the key to the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, to Mr. Larry Dediki, given in recognition of outstanding services as the City Commissioner for the City of Leavenworth. This is dedicated to Mr. Larry Dediki, April 17, 2001, through December the 10th, 2019. You have dedicated your life to this community, and we thank you for just planting the seeds and being a blessing, and also lending your kids to serve with us as well, too. So, thank you, Mr. Dediki.
Thank you very much. Well, by you all standing up, you're not making this any easier for me. The, first, I guess I want to thank all the citizens of Leavenworth, those that participate in voting. That's what puts us up here. It's not a personality contest. It's what we say we're going to do, and what we do. So, I want to thank all the citizens and voters of the City of Leavenworth, the greatest city in the state of Kansas. Secondly, I'd like to thank the commission. I've had the pleasure to work with probably about twenty-some people over the nearly two decades. The commission that's sitting now is a good commission. I've enjoyed working with them, and it's soon going to be filled up here again with another one. So, I wish this commission best of luck. When you do budget, do me a favor, do not raise taxes. I'm going to take a moment. My family's impressed me this evening by showing up. I'd like to introduce, Shelley, you want to stand up? This is my daughter, Dawn Michelle. My wife, Sharon. Wendy Dediki, this is Andy's wife. Grace Dediki, their child. And the Sheriff Dediki. And their son, Chase. Behind them is Andy Dediki, my eldest, or Jeff Dediki. I know it's showing Jeff Dediki is my eldest. I did. So, with that, I'm not a long-time speaker, everybody knows that. I pretty well shove it all in a nutshell. So, I'm going to let you get along with your business, and for me, I'm going to adjourn my meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dediki. At this time, we will have the 2019 elected commissioners and governing body oath of office given to 2019 elected officials.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Kansas
and the Constitution of the State of Kansas
and faithfully discharge
and faithfully discharge
the duties of City Commissioner
the duties of City Commissioner
of the City of Leavenworth
of the City of Leavenworth
State of Kansas
State of Kansas
so help me God
so help me God.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Campbell, to the City Commission.
Thank you.
At this time, nomination of terms, December the 10th, 2019, through December the 8th, 2020. Before we nominate and appoint our new mayor, I mean, I just want to first start off thanking my Lord and Savior Jesus for allowing me this opportunity to be able to serve in this position. I want to thank my wife and my beautiful family for the time that they have sacrificed and allowed me to be able to serve this community. And to the commission, thank you all for giving me an opportunity. And to the citizens of Leavenworth, you all have been amazing. Just the support that you all have shared with me throughout this term, man, it's just been blessedful. You know, for a city that was once known as a prison town, is now considered a city of hope, a city of where dreams can become true. And it's because of the citizens in this community are loving, caring, and compassionate. And I just want to say thank you all from the bottom of my heart. And it means so much just to be able to serve and given this opportunity. I was elected to serve, and I will continue to serve, with the title of a mayor or not a mayor. So, thank you all, and God bless you. So, at this time, I move to nominate Commissioner Griswold as the mayor to serve the term December the 10th, 2019, through December the 8th, 2020.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm just going to have to raise this chair. Thank you. First, I want to congratulate our newest elected Commissioner, Kamala Leonhard, and also Commissioners Bowder and Preisinger on their reelection to the City Commission. I look forward to working with the three of you and Commissioner Wilson over the next year. It is an honor to serve as the mayor of the first city of Kansas. Here in northeast Kansas, on the west bank of the Missouri River, thirty-five miles north of Kansas City, Leavenworth this year is 165 years old. Along with Fort Leavenworth, our city played a unique and pivotal role in helping settle the nation's west. And while we are proud of our history, the Leavenworth of today is on the march, confident its best days lie ahead. Under the leadership of first Mayor Preisinger and then Mayor Wilson, I would like to acknowledge the work of the commission over the last two years. With the support of the community, the city is making progress in a number of key areas. My intent is to keep this momentum going by listening, learning, and most of all, leading. The goal is straightforward but challenging, improving the quality of life for all Leavenworth citizens, and being proud to call our city home. Thank you again for coming, and I look forward to, obviously, tonight, but also the next year. So, I guess I'm in charge now? So, we will, we will, the next order of business is that I will like to have a nomination for the mayor pro temp term beginning December 10th, 2019, through December 8th, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Commissioner Nancy Bowder to be mayor pro temp from December, beginning December 10th, 2019, through December 8th, 2020.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? None, hearing, no discussion? All those in favor of the, we will start the vote with Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
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 Congratulations. The ayes have it. Five to five to zero.
No, we'll stay here.
Okay, okay.
The next, the next position is that I will accept nomination, a motion for a nomination for the Financial Claims Reviewer for the term December 10th, 2019, through December 8th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Commissioner Kamala Leonhard to become the Financial Claims Reviewer from December 10th for term December 10th, 2019, through December 8th, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to nominate, to approve, to select Commissioner Leonhard as the Financial Claims Reviewer, term December 10th, 2019, through December 8th, 2020. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
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 So, congra-
Congratulations. Thank you.
The ayes have it. Five to five to zero. Congratulations. Next, new business. Are there any citizens in the audience who wish to come to the podium and share comments about items not listed on this evening's agenda or to present a petition? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the next item under new business. Public hearing to consider petition to vacate a portion of an alley in Block 4, Neely's Forest Edition. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we open the public hearing.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Is there any discussion? If, if not, let's begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye. Oh, aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries.
So, when, Public Works Director Mike McDonald will handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a request to vacate an alley in what is known as Block 4, Neely's Forest Edition. It is also the block where the Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church is. They have a long-term expansion plan that involves the entire block, and they have recently acquired all of the, all of the property within that block. They have requested that the city vacate its interest, thank you. They have requested that the city vacate the interest, its interest in the alley that runs north-south through the middle of the block. Staff notes that the utility companies within the City of Leavenworth have the right to use that property for their utility business. We have contacted all the utility companies, and none have any objection to the vacation of the alley. It's worth noting also that the city has a sewer line in that alley, and it is proposed that the alley will be vacated by the governing body, retaining a easement where the alley exists today to accommodate the existing sewer line. All of that being said, this, there is no staff objection to this vacation. If you have questions, I will do my best to answer them, and I do believe the applicant is in the audience, excuse me, this evening.
Does any of the Commissioners have any comments or questions about this agenda item?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. I know it's just twenty feet. I'm very familiar with that alley, and I think most people wouldn't even realize it's an alley. They just thought it was part of the church parking lot and ingress and egress from there. But it's just twenty feet. What about the part that's the, 250 feet or so that's south of that? Is that already vacated?
I don't believe so.
So, why are we just vacating twenty feet of it?
Well, it's twenty foot wide.
Oh, twenty feet wide, okay. It's the whole thing. It's the whole thing. I misread it then. Okay, yeah. And I, you know, I'm very familiar with it, but I never realized it was an alley. I just thought it was part of the church property. And I think most people thought that, too.
I believe that's correct. But yes, this would be the entire north-south alley between Marion and Thornton, twenty feet wide.
Yeah. No other questions?
Any other questions or comments for Mr. McDonald?
No.
If not, I'll have a motion.
Do you want to ask if there's any public comment on this since we opened a public hearing?
Are there, are there any, is there any public comment on this particular agenda item? Please, please state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Ron Romig. I'm with Trinity Lutheran Church. My address is 1700 Limit Street in Leavenworth, Kansas. Just available to answer any questions. I've been working on this project from the start to finish. I appreciate the help of staff. Both mics have been very helpful, as well as Ms. Williamson, and just want to say thank you. It's part of our long-term plan to have acquired the entire city block now. Vacation of the alleyway, we can look to the future and what we do with that property to hopefully continue to serve the citizens of Leavenworth and the members of our congregation.
So-
Be had, glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So, we can assume your congregation is expanding, correct? I mean-
With God's help.
Yes. Any, any questions for Mr. Romig?
No, thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can we have a, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion.
You got to figure that one out.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. If, let's begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. So, now we have first consideration of the ordinance. Mr. Kramer, anything that-
No, staff is in recommendation of approval of this and just looking for consensus, and then it will appear on a second consideration at a future commission meeting.
Okay, so this is first consideration of this particular agenda item. Is there a consensus to move this ordinance along for final consideration at a future meeting?
Yes.
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 Okay. Yes, we have consensus, Ms. Williamson. So, we will move forward with that particular item. Next agenda item is public hearing to amend the 2019 budget. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing to amend the 2019 budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to open a public hearing to amend the 2019 budget. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
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 Aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. So, we have opened the public hearing for this particular agenda item.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, we have tonight our Finance Director Ruby Milline and our Deputy Finance Director Brandon Mills to present this item.
So, one of the most important items that the commission does on an annual basis is to approve the budget. And part of that Kansas budget laws require that we have the budget approved and submitted to the county in, by August 25th of the preceding budget year. So, that means we start the budget process in March of the, of the previous year. So, for example, in March of 2020, we'll begin the 2021 budget. Having said that, we have a whole year of, of time when things happen that were not foreseen in preparation of that budget. And so, because you can't spend the money without having spending authority, we have to come to the commission to bring to you items that came up during the year and get your approval for the spending authority and to amend that budget. So, so the items that we have this evening, we have two funds that had some changes during the year. We have the Stormwater Fund. And originally, we had planned to treat that as a capital project fund, which is not required by Kansas budget laws to be budgeted. And during the course of the year, became apparent that it's more appropriately classified as an enterprise fund, which requires us to bring a budget forward for your approval. The other one is the Business and Technology Park. The Business and Technology Park is considered an asset held for sale. And so, we do not typically budget for that simply because we don't know during the course of the year whether that is going to be sold or what will transpire with that. And so, this evening, we're coming to you for approval for the maintenance, mowing and landscaping and things like that that take place during the year at the Business and Technology Parks. Do you have any questions or?
What was the, what's the amount for the Business and Technology Park and then for the Stormwater?
So, the, the amount for the Business and Technology Park, we are presenting the whole amount that's in that fund, which is $475,000. However, there was about $50,000 that was actually spent on maintenance for that, so.
Right, okay.
And then on the Stormwater Fund, we collected about $1.3 million in Stormwater impact fees. So, and that's what we're budgeting, just to accommodate things that may come up, so.
And going forward, is that how we're going to deal with the Stormwater Funds?
The Stormwater Fund will be budgeted annually going forward.
Going forward, okay. Any other questions for the Finance Director for the city on this particular matter? Can I have a, well, I guess the public. Is, anyone in the audience want to come up and comment on this particular item since we, we have an open public hearing on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I motion to close the public hearing. Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing to amend the 2019 budget. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. Any, anything else we are going to? Go ahead.
We need to move to consider amendment.
Yeah.
I'll move.
Do I have a motion?
I move that, that the 2019 budget for the above-mentioned funds be amended as proposed.
There's a second, almost.
And, and there's a note here that these amendments require no additional tax levies.
That's, is there a second?
I second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The motion carries, five to zero. Next agenda item is-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is to consider comprehensive plan proposals.
Our Director of Planning and Community Development, Julie Hurley, will handle this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you'll recall, in August of this year, the city put out an RFQ to solicit proposals to update our comprehensive plan. On November 19th, just a few weeks ago, the two finalist firms that staff had selected came and both presented their approach to the plan for the commission, and we distributed a sample completed comprehensive plans for your review. So, tonight, we're here. We do need a motion for the commission to direct staff to enter into a contract with one of the firms of the commission's choosing. And just to note, this item was tabled from the November 26th meeting, just to give the Commissioners more time to review those example comprehensive plans. So, if you have any questions, I can answer those for you right now.
Are we, need a motion or is it a consensus or?
Sorry, we do need a motion. It was, I did list it incorrectly in the staff report. We do need a motion.
Okay. Go, go ahead. Open, open for discussion.
Okay. Can I, I really do appreciate you guys setting us up with the, you know, the comprehensive plans that the other cities have done. I thought they were very, very telling, and these are very close. These two companies are very close. I, in looking at something that we'll be using on a yearly, daily basis, I felt that one plan was better than the other to be able to follow by us and by the general public. And that was the Shockey Plan. But that's just my, my opinion. And I'd like to hear what others think as well.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Okay, yeah. Both firms did great presentations. But I sort of leaned towards the Shockey Consulting Firm. I like the size of the company and the experience. They seem progressive. Enjoyed their presentation. I looked at the other documents they did for the other cities, and I, since it's going to be a public document, their approach seems accessible to everybody and understandable. And they've worked with cities in the area, and they've done a lot of work for the City of Leavenworth. That has been well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Preisinger?
I wasn't at the meeting where they presented, but I was able to review the meeting as well as all the documentation they provided. And I, too, it sounds as if I'm in agreement with the other Commissioners, like prefer the Shockey proposal, but that takes nothing away from the professionalism of the RDG Group. Both of them, I think, presented very professionally, and both of them are very professional organizations. And a comprehensive plan is very important, but I just want to emphasize, it's not necessarily etched in concrete. It is a framework that we try to work with, but it, it's a, I don't want to say a dynamic document, but it's, doesn't lock us into things, but it does give us the framework of where we need to go over the next ten years or so. So, once again, I guess I'm telegraphing my vote, but I, Shockey wins out with me.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Well, I definitely loved both firms during their presentations. But because of Shockey does have a relationship and done several work with the city, I'm actually in favor of Shockey as well.
Okay, thank you. And I, too, both great firms, excellent presentations. I looked at about seven or eight criteria, but the two that were probably most important for me was I felt in the proposal from Shockey that there was a bit more detail in terms of actually how the work is going to, how they're actually going to accomplish the work. And that, to me, in terms of my experience and everything, in terms of contractors and plans and proposals, that meant a lot to me, and that was probably my primary reason for preferring them over RDG. And then the other thing is I felt that, looking at some of the plans that had been done before, that they've done a good job in terms of the vision, and, and we do need some work as far as that goes. And I thought they might be able to do just maybe a little bit better. And they talked about it, and I liked their answer to my question about the vision aspect for the city and also the vision for this particular comprehensive plan going forward. So, that was a, that's my, my input to the, to the process, so.
In here, it says motion, and on the, in our notes in here, it says consensus. Do we need a consensus? We need a motion, okay.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. So, I will entertain a motion on this particular agenda item?
I move that we enter into an agreement with Shockey Company for our comprehensive plan.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, just the next steps, what happens next is we will contact Shockey, and staff will start the process of entering into a contract negotiation, hopefully resolving quickly. They're aware of our budget number. They're aware of what we want. We're familiar with them. So, I expect it to work quickly, and we will bring that contract back as soon as we can.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. The next agenda item is Consider 2020 City Insurance Policy Renewal.
Let our City Clerk Carla Williamson start with this item.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is the approval for the renewal of the city's insurance package effective January 1st, 2020. The rate for 2020 will increase by about 20% due to payouts of claims against the city, most notably the wrongful death claim from 2017, which was just recently settled this year. The policy premium will increase from 200, $425,445,000, let me try that again, $425,445 to $522,389. One Beacon Insurance is the provider that we currently have, and we've been with them since January of 2014. They've done what I consider to be a really good job for the city. They've been easy to work with. Our insurance broker, Mike Riley, he goes out and obtains quotes from insurance companies each year to, you know, just check to see if there's anyone else out there that might be able to give us a better rate. He can explain a little bit more about the process this year, and I'll go ahead and turn that over to him to kind of explain a little bit about the loss summary and kind of where are we at with that 20% increase.
Good evening, Mr. Riley.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Carla, thank you. As Carla mentioned, we are recommending renewal tonight of the insurance program through One Beacon Insurance. This would be the seventh renewal that we would have experienced with One Beacon Insurance. Prior to that, to provide a little history, we were with Travelers Insurance for a number of years, close to 14 years with Travelers. There are really very few insurance carriers that are actually writing municipality coverage within the state of Kansas, and for that matter, in the Midwest, due to a number of different reasons. But Travelers being one, over the course of years, was tremendous for the city of Leavenworth, did a great job. As all insurance companies do, they sometimes ebb and flow from their rating structure perspective, and that's what our role is, to go out to the marketplace and try to find different carriers that might be a particular fit, given a number of different factors. So, in 2014, as Carla mentioned, we did make a switch to One Beacon, and over the last six years, One Beacon has, again, been very steady and a great partner of the city of Leavenworth from your insurance package perspective. We work with Carla and her staff all year to make sure the program, from a coverage standpoint, is in great shape. I'm happy to answer questions about the coverages that we offer, but again, I feel very comfortable standing in front of you, telling you that the coverage that you have from a municipality program is exactly what you need, and I feel very comfortable moving forward with the renewal with One Beacon. I would like to spend a little bit of time, given the fact that we do have a larger rate increase than we have been experiencing over the past six years with One Beacon, I'd like to explain a little bit about why that is. So, I provided two different documents. One is the loss summary, as Carla mentioned, and the other one is the renewal rate history sheet, and they really go hand in hand. So, when you look at 2014 on the loss summary, that is the first year you experienced coverage with One Beacon Insurance. That year, they paid roughly $95,000 in claims and resulted in about a 6.1% increase for the following year from a premium standpoint. Again, we followed that going down the two sheets, so in 2015, they paid roughly $246,000. It resulted in only a 1% increase the following year from a premium standpoint. Not only is your account reflective of your individual losses, but obviously, the insurance marketplace, from a grand perspective, whether in a soft marketplace or a hard marketplace. So, even though we paid $246,000 in claims roughly, we only had a 1% increase. And that story is very similar, as you follow those two sheets down from a loss summary perspective and the rate history. One Beacon has been extremely steady, to the point of previous, if you take out this particular renewal, it really averages about a 1% to 2% increase on an annual basis. And quite frankly, we were headed in that direction for this renewal as well. As you can see, 2019, our claims that have been paid year-to-date are only about $109,000. However, as Carla mentioned, we did recently settle the officer-involved shooting claim that reflects back onto 2017, the policy year when it happened, for $1 million. So, if you look at the loss summary, at the total, One Beacon has paid roughly $1.9 million in claims, and over those six years, you have paid roughly $2.2 million in premium. That results in about an 88% loss ratio. From an insurance company perspective, I will tell you 60% to 65% is where they need their clients to be in order to pay claims, pay expenses, have a profit, and offer renewal. So, we are at a point with One Beacon, given this very recent claim that was settled, where we are a little bit upside down, which is resulting in the 20% rate increase for 2020. So, despite that rate increase, we had actually had the account out to the marketplace, as we typically do, even informally sometimes, shopping to make sure that we got, we provide the city with the best coverage and also getting the best rate. At the time, we did have one other carrier, Travelers, was interested in looking at the account again, and we were in negotiations with them. However, when the claim settled, they did pull back and did not offer an optional quote. Not surprising, and I do think this is a temporary blip, given the city's history with claims, you can see where you are and where you're typically averaging, somewhere around the $150,000, $100,000 to $150,000 on a year when you look at over a six-year period of time. So, I do believe this is a one-year blip, and I do believe we will be back in the marketplace next year and hopefully have some more options. But given the history and given the fact that One Beacon has truly been, I think, a great partner for the city, we are recommending renewal.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Riley on this agenda item? How long's One Beacon been in, been in business?
One Beacon has been in the municipality business about 14 years in the state of Kansas.
And where's their headquarters?
Denver, Colorado.
Okay. That was a good rundown, Mr. Riley. I don't have any other questions or comments. I guess my only comment is that with the officer-involved shooting, I mean, that's why we have insurance, right? I mean, that's the bottom line. So, thank you for your rundown, makes it clear. If there's no further discussion, I will, I'm sorry.
The reserves, this will be taken from the reserves. How much do we have in our reserves right now?
About $2.79.
Oh, okay, okay, we can afford to do this.
That's a good question.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the One Beacon Insurance Premium for 2020 in the amount of $522,389.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
The next agenda item is Consider 2020 Cereal Malt Beverage Licenses.
City Clerk Carla Williamson also on this item.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the annual renewal of the cereal malt beverage license, so these are the licenses that'll be effective the first, January 1st of 2020. There are two different types of license, license for cereal malt beverage, they're either on-premise or off-premise license. The policy report lists each establishment, their address, and whether it's an on or off-premise license. State statute does require that the city commission approve these at their meetings, so these are before you today for, for your approval.
Any questions for the Ms. Williamson on this particular agenda item? This is something we do every year about this, correct?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I noticed three of the properties, or three of the businesses here that are applying for the cereal malt beverage are, they are accused of violations by the Kansas Gaming Commission for some actions that happened in this town a couple of weeks ago. Once again, they're accused at this point, and they face potential charges. I don't necessarily want to stop their application of cereal malt beverage, but I think we need to watch especially those three properties fairly closely, especially if charges are brought and go forward. I don't know what our actions should be, but I don't think we should take it lightly that they are potentially facing charges.
Any other comments or questions on this particular agenda item? If not, I will entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the 2020 cereal malt beverage licenses as presented.
A second. There's a motion and a second. There's a motion and a second on this agenda item. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. Next agenda item is Cancellation of December 24th, 2019 Regular Meeting.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, by city code, the city commission can cancel a regular meeting that is the night of Christmas Eve, traditionally a meeting that we do cancel. So, it's before you tonight. Staff does recommend approval of cancellation of that meeting. I would note that we only have one more meeting in 2017, which is normally a study session. We will have a study session and a special meeting that night to.
Next week.
Next week, to complete any business before the city.
Great.
Any, I'm sorry.
I'll be singing in church at night, so. Yeah.
That's a good, good reason for not having a meeting, so. Any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to cancel the December 24th, 2019 Regular Meeting.
I second.
There's a motion and a second on this agenda item. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution D. 2240 Planters Tenant Write-Off Accounts.
Julie Hurley will handle this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is just a resolution to delete uncollectible tenant accounts for planters too. This is a standard housekeeping item that comes up a couple of times a year, and this process is required by HUD. And this is basically just deleting tenant accounts that have been deemed uncollectible for whatever reason. Typically, this is folks who move out of the planters to units into an assisted living facility or have passed away, and there's still a balance on their account, or there's some sort of cleaning or repair costs that have to be incurred. So, the amounts are listed on the resolution. It's a total of about $5,000. So, we would look for a motion to adopt the resolution deleting those uncollectible tenant accounts.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Hurley on this particular agenda item? Pretty straightforward, I think, but if not, I will entertain a motion on this agenda item.
I move we adopt the resolution deleting these uncollectible tenant accounts.
I second.
There's a motion and a second on this agenda item. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. Thank you. The next agenda item is Consider Bids for Stubby Park Storm Drain Replacement Project.
Public Works Director Mike McDonald will handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, staff is pleased to bring you the results of the bid opening for the repair of the storm drainage structures under Stubby Park. A little bit of background is that the, where Stubby Park is now was originally a deep drainage ditch, and at some point, not entirely clear when, it was determined that we could just fill it up with whatever we had to make it a flatter spot. And as that happened over time, probably beginning in the late 1800s up through the, into the 1900s, it was time to put a pipe through it and cover it all the way up and make it into the sledding hill it is today. So, we do not know when it happened, but at some point, the creek through that area was lined with the corrugated metal pipe, and it does flow actually to Five Mile Creek, not Three Mile Creek, so the geography was incorrect in here, but the facts, the facts remain. And it has been used as an informal park for essentially decades. The Parks Department worked to want to upgrade the park, got approval from the commission to upgrade the park to make it better amenities, make it more of a destination than simply a small neighborhood park. And one of the problems that was a long, longstanding issue for public work staff was that metal pipe that was placed deep down in the hole was busy falling apart and creating potential for really expensive repairs. Being as oftentimes, all good things come together, the park was going to be upgraded, the city commission approved a stormwater fee to facilitate critical stormwater projects. We worked with the Parks Department to determine the nature of their project and the nature of the project that we desired, and ultimately, their project and this particular project do not conflict with one another. What staff, engineering staff is recommending approval of is essentially repairs the pipe as it is underground. There's, there's no known issues that would be benefited by digging it up and replacing with a newer pipe or a bigger pipe. It needs to be repaired to the point that it's solid and serviceable for many decades to come. So, we have created a project, working with contractors and vendors, that is a lining project. It's less expensive, you don't tear stuff, don't tear up stuff. It does not bother existing utilities. There's some kind of high-profile gas lines, natural gas lines that run through the area, and it does not conflict with the Parks project during construction or when this is completed. There's actually kind of two portions to the project. The main portion is from Fourth Street, kind of runs to the southeast over to Poplar. There's 241-foot of pipe that will be lined with a, some localized repairs, some inlets and manholes will be replaced. The pipe will be repaired with a, with a lining. We'll install some other inlets at the surface for the park to be designed to be kind of our water quality inlets, so that the runoff will be filtered before it runs straight off into the Missouri River. The part that's under Poplar Street was replaced as part of the signalization project. We did not want to have to deal with it in the future, and so there's, your middle part of this project is, is in good shape, replaced with new materials as part of that project. There's an additional 90 feet from kind of the south edge of Poplar Street heading to the southeast that will also be aligned, and that was placed in the project as an alternate bid. Staff identified that the project cost would be about $550,000, and based on the bids that we received, we're pleased to see the Line and Weaver Construction for total project of $540,435, which is, we find to be acceptable and recommend it be approved. This project is expected to start as soon as they get out there, and they believe they can do this in January. It's underground, it's, they don't have as many of the weather problems that you might expect in a January and February project, and the basic inspection of the project will be done by city forces. There's no substantial outside inspection contract as part of this. So, that was kind of the long, long story, but the short version is, we're pleased to recommend a word of this contract to Line and Weaver Construction Company.
Any questions or comments from Mr. McDonald, from any of the commissioners?
Well, yeah, just, so the project, you said, is anticipated to start in January, so will it take them about 90 days?
About 90 days, once they get started. We expect it to be done in 90 days. There should be minimal disruption to the public. There'll be some construction equipment parked out and about and around on the site, but we're not planning to block any of the, in the roads. There may be some inlet repair, you may have a lane closed on Fourth Street for a brief period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. McDonald? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, first of all, good rundown, Mr. McDonald on that project. I'll entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the bid for the Stubby Park Storm Drain Replacement Program in the amount of $540,435 and award it to Line and Weaver Construction.
I second.
There's a motion and a second on this agenda item. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item is Consider Contract with O'Neil Events and Marketing for 2020 City Festival.
City, City Manager Taylor Tetter will handle this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. O'Neil Events and Marketing has assembled a plan to execute the Camp Leavenworth Festival in 2020. It's a similar scope of work from last year, but it's not necessarily going to be the same festival, as we'll be building out successes and changing things as. festival, as we'll be building out successes and changing things as needed. O'Neill will come in front of you several times over the course of the next 11 months leading up to the festival to share input and updates to the commission. The contract and scope of work does include a detailed breakdown of the services covered. We are looking to just continually fine-tune our efforts and bolster the festival as that signature festival offered to residents and visitors alike. So I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Tetter on this?
Well, it was an exciting start. I'm looking forward to working with them again, definitely.
And, Mr. Tetter, the amount went up a little bit over the initial year, correct?
The total amount did go up, however, the total monthly cost actually went down. It's over 11 months. They're going to need to do a lot more backend planning for some of the talent that we're trying to obtain and getting better food vendors, things of that nature.
And just to reconfirm, this money's coming out of the transient guest tax
It is.
From the four hotel, not just the four hotels, I think, maybe there's five or six in town, but basically the four hotels.
Right.
Thank you.
Just one note from staff's side, from everybody, from our police chief to our fire chief, public works director, parks and recreation, the expertise that O'Neill provides in teardown, setup, rental, festival management, day of festival, leading up to festival, vendor management, talent acquisition, layout, they facilitate the design, the social media aspect of it. They also, as this contract includes, all the financial management, all the point-of-sale credit card work that is, allows for people to easily purchase items, is all handled by O'Neill. I can speak from my office that they are professional and made the festival relatively stress-free for city staff for our first year.
And it looks like the projected weekend is a little bit later in September for the 2020 festival than we had, I think we had it in maybe the middle of September.
We have two weekends right now. We hope to make that decision here in the next couple of weeks. I think it's the 16th and 17th of September.
It's the September 18th and 19th, or the 25th and 26th.
And we're waiting on a couple of things to determine that. One of the things that we did here that we're trying to improve for next year, and that we also helped getting O'Neill involved earlier, is food vendors, just more. I know there's a lot of demand. They book a year ahead of time, and there's a lot of festivals in the Midwest in the fall, so we really want to get on that and do things like that.
And whichever weekend we choose, we're basically going to lock out any other events in town during that weekend. We want
We're sure going to try any ones that we have control of, just to try to minimize disruptions.
Right. I mean, that'll be the only one that, city-sponsored or under the auspices of the city that we'll have, will just be the Camp Leavenworth.
Right.
Obviously, people have waiting and things like that. Okay, thank you.
And I think the cost of this contract is, what, $61,292? So that's, when we make the motion, we need not to exceed
And that includes both the festival management portion for 11 months, plus the financial management software and reporting that they provide.
Great job. Yeah, I think it was an excellent festival, and she does excellent work, and she was boots on the ground, serving and helping.
It's a great start, yeah. I'm excited about this year.
Any other comments or discussion on this particular agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we consider the comprehensive management contract with O'Neill Events and Marketing for the 2020 Camp Leavenworth Festival in the amount, not to exceed
$61,292.
$61,292.
Second. There's a motion and a second on this agenda item. Begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. The next agenda item is the consent agenda, and I will ask Commissioner Bowder to take this particular agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, I, after review of the claims, I move to approve the claims for November 23 through December 6, 2019, in the amount of $1,311,307.05. Net amount for longevity pay, effective November 29, 2019, in the amount of $48,676.87. And payroll number 25, effective December 6, 2019, in the amount of $338,719.61. No police and fire pension.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the consent agenda item. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Obviously, I had a little different format on that, but
That's okay.
That's okay.
That's the one I'm used to. You're new. Yeah.
The ayes have it, and the vote is five to zero.
Yes.
Thank you.
We knew what you meant.
So, any other, well, what I'd like to do before I get to the commissioners, Mr. Kramer, do you have anything for the commission?
Yeah, just two items. Over the past week, there have been some tragedies in the country, and I certainly don't want to discount any or leave out any, specifically the one in Pensacola, but I did want to mention two. There were two cities in our country, two municipal governments that suffered losses. The city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the city of Houston, Texas, had police officers who were murdered over the last week. So we have police officers in our city who have families, and I wanted to send our thoughts out to those cities and their families, and if you see our police officers, just think about them and their family and the fear that something like that puts in as they go out each week to do their job. So I just wanted to mention that. On a more positive note, I want to, we have finalized a recreation cooperation with Lansing. I know that was a goal of the city. So we are going to focus this year on fifth and sixth grade boys' basketball. We're going to do, two of the weeks, we're going to go send two teams to Lansing, they'll send two teams up here, and we'll have a Parks and Recreation collaboration with our two recreation programs, so that's really exciting.
That's awesome.
And then I also want to point out, thanks to Steve Grant and his staff, Tabor Madill, our basketball registration and participation is up about 25% this year. They think, they put up the real estate signs, I don't know if you saw them at the entrances to the schools, something they tried this year, and, you know, you talk about social media and all the technology stuff, and you stick a sign at the entrance to the schools, and that drives participation, so I just wanted to share that good news as well.
Okay, I'm going to go around the horn here. Mr. Preisinger, anything for?
I, Public Works told us that the Thornton Fifth Avenue and Maple intersection is going to open on Monday. I drove it today, and it's a beautiful piece of work. The road's very smooth, I could drive it all the way down to Fourth Avenue, then Fourth Avenue, back west all the way to the high school, to 10th Avenue. Taken out quite a bit of that hill, as you mentioned, which takes four feet out of that hill, so it does go down a little bit, but it's not the ski jump or, you don't come up and almost do a gainer as you used to, so it's a much safer intersection. They're working, there's quite a few crews out there working on the sidewalks today. It's a very nice-looking intersection, and I look forward to it all being completed from Fifth Street all the way to 10th Avenue, probably next August, September. They're good work, so open there now, so.
Thank you.
The only thing I will add is that the weather is cooperating this year, right? This time last year, I think we'd already had at least one snowstorm. That's a good rundown. That's good news. Anything else, Mr. Preisinger?
No, that's it.
Commissioner Wilson?
No, sir.
Commissioner Leonhardt?
No.
Commissioner Bowder?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. I have only, I have one question for the city manager. Several years ago, there was a, I think, the renewal of the county one-cent sales tax, the 20-year renewal. I was just wondering, I know that there were at least, I think, three official projects, I'm pretty sure the two are done. I was wondering what's going on with the Eisenhower Road project with respect to, and would like to know if we've heard anything about kind of a timeline for getting that work done.
The latest update we had is that they are in the final stages of some final utility agreements. We believe that there are two different water organizations that they're finalizing, and then a gas company that they're finalizing the utility agreement. We do have a county commissioner, if she'd like to
They've signed.
They've been signed since our And that, we believe that the bulldozers will be rolling in 2020, I think, is what we have heard. So sometimes those utility stuff can take a long time, but we hope the project moves quickly from this point.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that particular agenda item? So at this point, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's regular meeting. All those in Begin voting.
I like to do that as considered. I'll get it down by next meeting.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Vote is five to zero. The motion carries, so we are adjourned.